We'll call this meeting to order. This is the March 20th meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? Oh, we got you.
Amanda Savage. Counselor Brent Todd.
Yes.
Counselor, I think that's me, Brian Chen.
We're both here.
Oh, you're both here.
No. No, Brian Chen is not.
Okay. David Fox.
That would be me.
Earl Pierce.
Present.
Jeff Santa Cruz.
Here.
Matthew Hicks.
Physically here, yes.
Rich Woodfinn.
Here.
Teresa Rosenberg here.
Okay, we have quorum. We will move forward and address our first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the February 21st meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Quick agenda overview for tonight, if you are here, for one of the following items. 9A, which is AAMCO 388 Loudon Road, has been postponed, excuse me, has been moved, postponed, to the April 17th meeting at the request of the applicant. The item 9C on the agenda, which is Christ the King Food Pantry, has been postponed at the request of the applicant, moved to the April 17th meeting. And item 9F, First Church and Islamic Society, has been moved to the April 17th meeting at the request of the applicant. So we've got three items on there. Would someone like to make a motion to move those items to the April 17th Planning Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So if you're here to, again, hear one of those items, 9A, 9C, and 9F, those will not be heard tonight. Let's move on to our... Oh, we got nominations. So sorry, we gotta take a quick, do a little housekeeping here, folks. So we've got nominations for the chair. I can certainly step out if anybody would like to put their hand up.
I'll nominate Rich Woodfinn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah, I said let you... I said it. Okay. So that was quick.
I'll nominate Earl Pierce for vice chair.
Second.
Earl Pierce has been nominated to vice chair. He's got a second. Any discussion? Anybody else put their name in? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Pierce, not even Counselor Pierce.
Vice Chairman.
My Vice Chair Pierce. Welcome, Vice Chair Pierce. So thank you, Anne Marie. Keep me on, keep me on task. So we will move on readily to our design review applications by consent. I just lost my sheet of paper here. Hold on a sec. All right. So designer view and extension applications by consent. So on our applications for consent tonight, we have items 5A, 5B, 5C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K, as well as an extension, an application extension by consent. Can we do all those in one motion?
I'm more, I'm more consent.
I would do the fives.
Okay, so let's do all the fives, which are all signed applications. Again, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about any of those items I just listed off? If you could make yourself known. If not, we will take those with designer view comments by consent in totality. Someone like to make a motion to approve those as submitted with designer view comments?
So moved.
Take that motion. Motion has been made. And second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item 6A is an extension application by consent for a project that will be pushed out, 11 Stickney Ave, for one year. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that extension as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And we got one item on the agenda for determination of completeness by consent. Timothy Blinden and the Friends of the Concord Lake Sonopee Rail Trail request major site plan approval for the construction of a multi-use stone gravel trail and approval of a conditional use permit for wetland buffer disturbance in conjunction with the trail. Staff has found the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for the April 17th meeting?
So moved.
And not a development of regional impact. That was on the next page. Would some, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're moving right along in our applications. Item 8A, Neopco Signs on behalf of New Car requests architectural design review approval for a new 32-square-foot internally illuminated pylon sign at 13 Manchester Street on the Gateway Performance District. We heard from this applicant last month. Just for the record, planning, the planning department requested feedback from the city solicitor's office. We did receive that feedback. You should have all received it in your packets, a letter from the city attorney. I think it was fairly straightforward. I'm not going to get into the details of the letter. It was presented to us as just legal, legal information back and forth. But it's fairly straightforward and I think it's very, it's very concise. So we're going to take the information that we got from the city solicitor's office, develop a plan, to talk to the architectural design review folks, and put some guidance in place to say, this is what you can say, this is what you can't say, this is what you can regulate, this is what you can't regulate from the signs. So again, my appreciation to city staff and to the solicitor's office for getting a fairly concise topic down. I appreciate Glenn Shadlik for bringing the, bringing the topic up and making, and making it known to the city. So I'll welcome you to the table, even though I told people who you were, but if you could state your name for the record?
Yes, Glenn Shadlik, Neopco Signs.
Okay. And I think, again, everybody's familiar with it. I think everybody was here last month for this particular sign. And again, given the feedback that we heard from, from, from the solicitor's office, I don't think there's any issues with both, both a phone number and/or a website on the sign. So if there's any concerns regarding the application, presence of the newcar.com website or others, if you could let me know, that would be great. If any member of the audience has any questions or concerns on this, if you could let us know, no? Any other follow-up?
The only other question I would have is, I did call the solicitor's office to find out what the findings were, and I was told due to attorney-client privilege, I couldn't get any of that information. But I am curious what that entail. I don't know if that is going to become public or if I...
It will. So what we'll do is, the, the document that was sent to the board is attorney-client privilege, won't be read here, won't be part of the record. What we'll do is, we'll, we'll work with the planning staff to come up with some, some designer view overviews and some ordinance issue, not ordinance issues, but some general guidelines that say, you can say this and you can't say this. Or more importantly, what architectural design review can do regarding the general look of the, of the sign, the feel of the sign, the lighting of the sign, how it ties into the building, and not particularly what's on the sign. And I think that was your point right from the get-go, is, is don't tell me what I can put on the sign. We can tell you, there's too much on the sign, and it's too cluttered, and it's not directional, it's not showing what we want, or it's an awful terrible color, but, you know, we're not going to say, go ahead forward. We're not going to say you can and can't put this on the sign. That's, that's going to be the general gist of it.
One aside note is, I do want everybody to know, including the designer review board, that I truly appreciate the time that you guys volunteered to, and your time to do all this, and your expertise. You know, I appreciate the opportunity to work with all the staff moving forward.
Good. Great. Well, I appreciate it. And again, I think we, we, again, we, you know what you know, and you know what you don't know what you don't know. And if we're, we're seeing inconsistencies, which we obviously are, we want to fix them and make sure that staff's...
Much appreciated.
Yeah. Any other comments? Anything? Okay, so I think we got a motion. Do we have a motion on the table?
For approval.
Second.
We got a motion on the table. In a second, any discussion? Further discussion on that? I gotta close the public hearing first. So we'll close the public hearing. I've got a motion and a second on the table. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Glenn. Again, I appreciate your help and feedback, and we'll be following up with some, some follow-up on, on the regulation.
Thanks again.
Okay, that moves us on quickly into our next item on the agenda, item 9. Madam Clerk, could you read that into the record?
Yes, sir. Altus Engineering, on behalf of Ryan Tabor, request major subdivision approval for an eight...
Nope, 9A. Sorry, you didn't miss one. Sorry.
9A, we...
Yep, we deleted it.
Request major subdivision approval for an eight-unit residential condominium development at 15 Hawthold Pond Road in the Open Space Residential RO District.
All right. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Yep. Good evening. I'm Eric Sari from Altus Engineering.
And Ryan Tabor, the applicant. I'm going to plug in if I can here.
Okay. While you're doing that, if we could get a quick staff update on this, and an update from where we were, whatever, a couple months ago, I think, right?
Yep. Since you saw this application last, they have reduced from a nine-unit cluster subdivision to an eight-unit cluster subdivision, which changed a lot of the requirements. They also reduced the length of the road for the edge of the cul-de-sac to Hawthold Pond to be less than 1,000 feet. So between those two, those two changes have greatly reduced the amount of waivers and probably been largely in a lot, lot more parts of compliance with our subdivision regulations. You'll see the applicant is still requesting three waivers, two of which staff recommends, one of which staff still doesn't see the technical challenge to support. That's the short of it. They met with ADR. You can see the ADR's recommendation. Been working with the applicant just to iron out some of the notes that they want to, you know, eventually include with their condo declaration as some design guidelines.
Okay. So tell us a little bit about where you, where you stand here now.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me flick through here. Well, let's see here. As Alec pointed out, we have reduced the unit count down to eight, which changed quite a few of the requirements in terms of road width, all sorts of other fun things. So the number of waivers was reduced significantly. I think we're only asking for three now. The road itself was shortened. We now meet the fire department's requirement of 1,000 feet, so we're good there. We have eight units instead of nine, and the name of the project has changed to Saneva Ridge. I guess Shaker was already taken, so it's no longer Shaker Landing. We played with a few things here on the storm waters, you can see on this plan. Before, we had a rain garden down on the bottom here. We moved that over to the left and took the rain garden out of the middle of the cul-de-sacs, and now all the storm waters concentrated in this area here. Let's see here, grading on that. Other fun things, erosion control, septics. We also moved the septics around quite a bit. We used to have all of the septics being pushed over to this side of the lot, which required a number of horse manes. So right now, that has been reduced to only two of these two units here, and instead of sending it all the way across the lot, they're actually pretty close to the units themselves. There are a number of engineering comments that I'm sure that we can address. Pete and I will go back and forth on that. We beat each other up. Not the proper form of that. So the waivers we're requesting, one is, let me see here, let's find the road profile, is the slope. I believe the maximum is eight. We're proposing 10, and that is due to the topography of the site. This is a steep site, as you can see from the existing profile. So we are proposing 10, and engineering does support that, from what I understand. The other one? Let's see. The other one was overhead power. Where am I going here? Overhead power for this section where there are no houses, and that's to minimize conflicts with street trees. Once we're past this point, everything in front of the units is proposed to be underground, to give you that look that we all like, you know, underground power. But we did it in here because this is very narrow. If you look at the cross-section right here, you can see this is the canyon that we're creating here. We've got to get underground power. We've got to get trees in there, so it's a little tight. So we looked at it and said overhead's probably the right bet for that section there.
Can I ask a question?
Go for it.
Could you, there are five criteria that have to be met for the granting of a waiver. And I, I think staff was just a little unclear in how you were, which of those criteria was fitting in, so...
Well, this one really is, is just unique to the situation on the site. The existing topography is, as we know, it's way up the hill. It's a very narrow core. Let me go back to the, right in, let me zoom in on this here, if I can. Maybe I can zoom in on that. The entrance to the property is this little narrow strip here. And luckily, there's a 20-foot grating easement on this bottom side here that allows us to really make this thing work. Otherwise, I don't think it could fit at all without retaining walls on both sides of the road. So that unique constriction really drives us to try to, you know, cram as much as we can in there. But reasonably, when we look at it, we've got a situation where underground power and trees really aren't going to work. So I think you'd rather have the trees, in my opinion, though. But that is just a situation unique with the property. It's that narrow strip that we have to work around. And the goal was to minimize that visual impact by only keeping that overhead power in this section here versus in front of the units.
Would it, would it create a particular unnecessary hardship?
Aside from costs, yes. It's going to be technically a little bit difficult to get trees to work with underground power and a strip that narrow. Some people might say, well, you could put underground power underneath the street. We typically like to avoid that. If something happens, you're going to conduit break, you're digging up the road, which is going to cause all sorts of problems for the people that live there. If there's an accident, you're going to have a fire truck go up there, an ambulance, you're going to have problems. So we'd like to minimize that. So we'd like to keep underground power in the shoulder where the trees are going to be, and they don't really live well together, unfortunately. The landscape architect selected trees on this run here to be shorter, so they could fit underneath the overhead power. So that was one concern we did address.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. All right. The other one relates again to the constriction here, which is the slopes, the side slopes. Go back to the cross-section. Zoom in on this guy. This is the constriction of the property line here and the edge of the easement. So we've got to fit these slopes within those confines. Four to one would be off the map, which is the requirement, which is why we're asking for that waiver. Every other area where we're not constricted by the property, we are doing four-to-one slopes as, as required. So it's really just that constricted spot along the entrance that we're asking for that waiver. So that's, in a nutshell, guys, I'd like to entertain any questions you guys have.
Okay. Questions on the board? Just?
I do have a couple. And some of this is going to be directed a little bit at Peter. How comfortable is the city with one-to-one slopes and long-term stability of that? In general practice, one-to-one slopes without riprap and trying to do it with grass just doesn't last.
All right. Do you want to tackle it?
Yeah. Riprap would be an absolute given, but I think even with riprap, one-to-one is really steep. I think I did comment on that.
You did comment on that, and that was something we were going to talk about. I've done one-to-one successfully with grass. I'm open to riprap. I don't think that's an issue at all. In areas where we can go one and a half to one, there is some room in there. We will certainly do that and widen that out a little bit. I just looked, it's easy just to do one-to-one consistent all the way up.
Yes.
I'm not saying I advocate riprap, because that adds to the whole heat effect of the area.
It does, and it can be unsightly.
And the other thing is, is to be honest with you, I'm looking at your typical, and I'm looking at your landscape plans, you've got one-to-one slope, and the tree sits right there.
Yep.
That tree's not going to survive, because your roots are going to be overburied, so...
We're going to have to look at potentially some tree wells. There is some rock on site, some boulders. We may have to do a well behind it to sort of scallop out that slope. That's something we're going to have to address with the landscape architect. I'm the landscape architect, so I need to really talk with him about this. How are we going to make these things live?
And depending on how big that wall is, you might get structural engineer...
Exactly, exactly.
...to make sure it's not going to fall over. If I could, on that same aspect, is, you indicate, the landscape architect says they're okay with trees under power lines. We've had other applicants in here within the last few months where we have specifically said, we don't want trees under power lines. So I also looked at where your power line comes across the street, transitions to underground. You have a catch basin coming in from one side, a catch basin from another, a manhole, and an outlet pipe. You're dropping a pole there and trying to go underground. I'm not so sure you can fit all that in there comfortably without...
It's going to be a little tight.
Well, if you ever have to go back and do drainage work, you make the same comment that, gee, if the line breaks, and you ever have to go back and dig the road up. If anything fails in that range, and you've got to go back and deal with that basin, you've now got a potential pole issue of having it fall over.
I, I agree. Looking at that now, I think I would put the pole on the other side of that line going to the bottom of the page here.
So I guess just...
Easy way to do it.
I would seriously consider to the board that we look at putting it in the shoulder on one side or the other, and not trying to overhead amongst the trees, and then have that issue of where it ties in. But, you know, I'll defer. If engineering really doesn't want it in the road for some reason, fine, but I'm looking at this, and I see enough reasons why, you know, I don't know that I'd be in support of the waiver for not underground from the beginning.
You really don't want to put underground underneath your road, because if something happens, you're going to have to take up the road. Not only that, it undermines the shoulder, undermines all the trees on the site. That's a big issue. And ever source dictates how you trench this, how wide the trench is, and how they lay their conduits. It's going to be more than one four-inch or five-inch conduit going up there. You're going to have a 36-inch to a 48-inch trench going up through there, for underground.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is Unitil, not ever source?
This is ever source.
It is? But all Concord was Unitil.
I would like to point out, the tree he selected, the landscape architect selected a Japanese tree lilac. So it's, it's more, it's technically a tree, so it meets the requirements, but it's not going to get that height that a normal, you know, tree would do. So it's, it's, he selected it for this purpose, so I'm not going to second-guess him.
The, the only reason we're going for overhead right there is purely engineering, because you don't want to pave a road and have your shoulder and your granite curbing in, and then something happened with the conduit and the power to all those houses, and then you're going to rip it all up. You're going to impede the egress for everybody up there, and then you're going to have to redo everything along the whole stretch, which could be a complete nightmare, especially once everything's vegetated. So it's, like you said, it's more, it's, ever source is mandated how, how they lay the conduits in there. We have to follow their trench specs. So it's, if they mandate a 48-inch trench, and they want to lay every conduit singular side by side, I can't do anything about it. So it has to be. I just don't want to undermine the road.
Guess I'm done for now. Thank you.
Relative to the underground, would you also be doing communications facilities, cable?
Oh, yeah.
Everything would go in a separate, well, you, you advocate for in the air.
Well, on this section at the start of the project, in the narrow little canyon, as I call it, that would be overhead. But underground would be from about this point, whether I put the pole where it's shown or on the other side of that pipe, that'd be underground everything. So power, communications, the whole nine things.
So how many feet are we talking about overhead?
Good question. It's about 400, yes.
So you're talking two to three poles, depending how ever source is going to lay it out. They would, they would own the final design on it and have it installed.
I, I do agree that I have a few years... I do agree that I have a few years involved with buried utilities and it's not if they fail, it's when, and it's interesting that you talk about having to dig up the road and the, and everything else that goes with it if it is buried, so I understand your...
That's going to be buried up farther, so the same, same argument is it's going to be buried a little bit farther up, so if you have a problem...
Well, that, that's off the road though, once we're farther up, it's, it's in the shoulder.
Yeah.
So yes, it's about four hundred and change, it's like four hundred five, four hundred ten feet.
All right, thank you.
Any follow-up?
No.
No? Jeff?
Not on this issue, no, I have another...
Okay, well hit us.
Has engineering received the site, both intersection stopping site distance for the driveway yet?
Not yet.
No, that was a comment, right?
That was a comment, yes.
That was a comment, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Any other, any comments engineering-wise, so we... I don't want to put you on the spot, you don't have to, just if you've got anything you want to say, I'll give you the chance.
It's a tough, it's a tough piece of land, I think construction is going to be really challenging.
Yeah, I can't help but...
This is not my favorite site.
You don't have the issues with, with, with the turnaround for fire and safety because you shortened the driveway, I mean, it's not that you fixed anything, it's just that you, you changed the plans enough where it's, it's, it's not going to impede here, it's not going to cause this issue, it's not going to cause that waiver, so it's essentially the same plan, right, that we saw?
For the most part, yes.
I mean, other than being a massive amount of information, overwhelming amount of information and pages in here, one hundred and fifty-six pages in the supplemental, there's a lot of info to go through and like you said, it's, it just strikes me as rife with, with issues, but...
And you don't feel any better when you go out and actually look at the site?
No, I've been by a couple of times, you don't, you wonder how the hell anybody's going to drive up that road, Jeff?
One other comment, I realize you have frontage on Shaker Road, did you ever consider coming with your overhead utilities off Shaker Road?
I would have loved, well, with the overhead, I never thought of it.
No, no, I'm sorry, underground, coming up through the ways.
Underground, no, I never looked at that, it is pretty steep, so installation would be an issue, I mean, ever source put in overhead, but that's a different animal, I kind of wanted to leave that buffer alone if I could, that was one, one situation, but it's also pretty steep, I mean, that hatching on this plan is areas fifteen to twenty-five percent and greater, I mean, there's areas over thirty percent on this lot, particularly along that Shaker Road edge, so it would be challenging.
It was just a simple question because if it was shorter and solved a lot of the issues we're talking about down the other end, come in through?
It, it would, but I think it's, it would probably even more challenging.
I just wanted to make sure that you thoroughly read all the staff comments?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Including with all the subdivision regulations, all the items that are, need to be changed?
Yes, yeah.
I guess it was a big package of info.
Well, it was the whole regulations and it was just every single one, and a lot of them were no comment, if you go through another ones where, hey, you need to do this, so...
So if I remember right, we did hear from Butters and from folks in the area last time around regarding water sheeting off and issues with drainage, any of those been addressed or any, any...
I mean, it's actually a little bit better, scroll, where's the page down button on this? So this is a diversion berm and swale, so no runoff from here, we'll be able to escape and cross this property line, so this has zero impact from drainage, and this takes all the runoff from this whole area here, detains it and treats it before releasing it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And that goes down to Shaker, which crosses the culvert.
I remember you said that earlier, I apologize, so, I had written my notes to ask and I had to ask, all right, any other questions from the board? We'll open it up for public, yep, sorry.
There's a staff comment about increasing the landscape buffer within the one-hundred-foot setback behind unit eight, units one, just for the board to consider and if you, this site was previously logged prior to, I think, their ownership, and so just re-establishing if we, if the board wanted to require the applicant to increase the landscaping in those areas to fortify those buffers.
Just unit one and unit eight?
Kind of behind units one and three, behind units seven and eight, in those areas where there's that one-hundred-foot buffer.
Okay.
I think behind seven, I think right here is pretty much where the logging stops, so I think there's a pretty good buffer on that edge, I'll have to check it, but this section was the landing, that's where they pulled all the logs out of, so that was effectively denuded, but if we look at the grading for the lots...
So around four to eight, what was logged has since re-vegetated in that entire buffer, so my intent was to leave it as its natural vegetation and I don't want to destroy natural vegetation to replant vegetation.
It's, it's thick second growth, it's like a lot of maple and birch and things like that.
Could be, I'm using the landscape plan.
Okay.
Yes, delineated clearing limits.
Yep, in, in this particular case, we do, I did do some rough grading for leach fields here, these two here, so there is limited room back in here without interfering with that, but there is some space to do something, but again, it is starting to grow up pretty well, pretty thick, so that's the fourth pleasure, I guess.
Okay. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, Eric, I did want to ask you about the grading behind houses, I think it's four and five, it's a huge difference between the finished floor elevation.
Yep, that is, I call it a double walkout essentially, so it's, it would have first floor obviously access from the driveway, like, and then two floors below it, so both of which would be exposed on the backside, it's not my preferred way to do it, I would rather not...
I don't know how you're going to do it.
It, it's possible, it's been done before, I've actually lived in two houses that had a situation like that.
We also have taken into account, some of these things will change as construction progresses in the field, which will be documented and everything will be submitted via as-built, but existing conditions do have precedent on some of this.
I, I'm not a home builder, so I could look at this and look at it one way, a home builder who's done this, you know, twenty-five years, look at it.
Is the whole basement going to be carved out, it's going to be fifty, twenty feet?
Yes, that's the plan right now, it might not be, I don't know, it depends on what the builder wants to do, whoever buys one of these units and they want to do a different floor plan, which we know we'd have to come back to change things here, but it's, it's kind of just, this is showing that it's possible, not necessarily what's going to happen.
We also have extra material in sight, cut and fills, so it'll be extra material that we can utilize on-site for either bringing up elevation or reducing elevation.
We also cut the retaining walls out, you recall the last one had a lot of retaining walls stepping down that slope, we could go back to that type of setting in behind these units as well if, if necessary, I think they'd probably have to get a structural engineer involved at that point, but that's down the road.
Have you thought about retaining walls or gabion walls on, on the road, near the entrance?
Gabions, I'm not a huge fan of, I'm, I've actually never used them, but I always think, is that mesh going to rust out and the whole thing going to fail? That's, that's the fear in my head, it's probably unfounded and I'm not sure if they've been used successfully in a lot of places, I'm more of a fan of using the native materials, we've got boulders on site, line those up, if we have to, we'll terrace it, step the slope back.
Because a good amount of larger rock on site, we can use as a rubble, rubble retaining wall essentially, anything under four feet, so we can hire a structural engineer.
I, I think if you want to go more than one and a half to one slopes, I think you're going to have to show me something that's...
Okay.
A bit broader.
Well, I think I can do the one and a half to one in most of that, that neck, I mean, if you got, I mean, it's not this one, let's see.
If I could, while they're looking up some. Terms of gabions, if you go on Route 3A, south just...
Yeah, they've been used in, in the state, yeah.
Those particular gabions, I was at DOT, we installed those, those have been in for over twenty years.
Oh, they're really, okay.
They're not rusted and falling apart and they're right next to the roads that are subject to DOT road salt, so I just, to allay your fears, they do make them so that they retain, we use them in salted environments along the road.
I've never inspected them, so...
No, I just want you to know, so please don't just discount them because you've never used them.
Appreciate that.
They can be used and you can actually, if you terrace them, you can actually grow material on the terraced areas as well to kind of break up that visual look.
Yes.
So I've got, the plan that I'm looking at here on page thirteen of the plans that it looks like this whole unit five, so it just says four and six, are those the two that you're talking about on the left?
What's the, what's the name of the sheet?
Thirteen was on my page here, it had the fuchsia lines on it for the...
Acceptual grading, C four point one.
The grading, okay.
Right there.
Yep. So we've got one, two, three over here and this is four, five.
But does that say six, I just didn't, okay, it does say six?
If you go to page twenty-two.
This is six right here, oh wait.
That's five.
Oh, you know what, okay, yes, those are mislabeled from, so this is wrong, this should be five, six, seven, eight.
So the ones you're asking are four and five?
Right, yeah.
They show us four and six on this sheet, right?
You can see, right, you can see the magenta contour lines.
Yeah, and you can tell that it's, okay.
Yeah, they're labeled correctly on every other sheet, so of course there's one sheet out there, yeah, sorry about that.
That's why I picked that one.
Clear, clear.
Mr. Chairman, on that same, I think it's that same sheet, C, I'm trying to get to the bottom, C four actually?
C four.
Where you have the culvert that comes down from the road, can you zoom in to where the flare end section is, I'm just, I'm looking at this, I'm just trying to understand, you've got an outlet from the flare end of five forty-four and the immediate contour next to it is five forty-three on the right.
This is five forty-three wrapping around, this, this should be magenta actually.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that that's not going to be enough for a problem, that it's going to spill over on that corner?
Oh, no, no.
And go onto the adjacent lot, because there's no spot grades that kind of give me an idea what's happening in the middle.
Yep.
I'm just wondering is, you've got on your erosion control plan, you've got material there and everything to prevent erosion, I'm wondering, is there any way to soften that, not to make it a ninety-degree angle and then maybe that reduces the chance of erosion?
I, I can look at that, I mean, it's just, we want to get down the hill in a straight shot, then of course you're coming at a ninety to the property line, so that's, that's the constriction, but we do have a cross-section here, I think it's whatever sheet this is, you do see this is the flare end section here, so it is below grade and we do have this existing ground.
I, I just, I appreciate that, I apologize, I didn't see that on the plan, so...
Okay. Any other comments, Pete? No? Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Wow.
All right.
Surprised. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, thank you very much for your testimony. So we've got our information here in front of us, again, you've heard from staff, there's some concerns regarding a couple of the waiver requests, so again, in our packet here, we'll use the, the information that we've got in our packet, the testimony you heard here tonight is our findings of fact to move forward on this application, we do have waiver requests under two-point-one, the application is requesting, the applicant is requesting waivers for the following sections, table twenty-one dash one to allow for private common driveway slope of ten percent or eight percent is the maximum allowed to provide efficient access to the site, staff supports this waiver due to the unique topography which exists on the site with stipulation that curbing be provided as shown on C three, issued date of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, I'm going to take these one at a time, would someone like to make a motion to grant that two-point-one table twenty-dash-one waiver request as outlined? I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries two-point-one for figure twenty-three to allow common driveway, private access, excuse me, to allow common private driveway side slope to, in excess of the four-to-one maximum allowed for construction for private common driveway within the limits of the property and slope easement, staff supports this waiver request only in the portion of the common drive that is restricted by width of the property, would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver request?
So moved.
I had a motion, I'll second, any further discussion?
I'd like to amend the motion?
Yep.
To say, rather than just leaving it blank in excess of four to one, I think we should have something in there to the fact of providing slopes reviewed and approved by engineering, because it sounds like there's still some back and forth necessary and I don't want to just leave it too open.
Peter, you comfortable with that?
It's acceptable to both.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll take that motion if we can off the table and recognize Jeff's comment regarding figure twenty-dash-three to allow common driveway slopes in excess of four-to-one maximum, providing, help me...
Approval of the proposed slopes by engineering.
Yeah, to allow for the construction of the private common driveway within the limits and property slope easement, so we had a motion from you, Earl, is that still valid?
Yes.
And who had the second, I have the second? I had the second, still valid for me, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries in section twenty-six oh two-one to allow overhead utilities on a portion of the common public driveway where underground is required, due to lack of apparent technical challenges supporting this request, staff does not support the waiver request, has staff heard anything in, different that would change their mind? I don't think so.
No.
Okay, any motions on the table or any further discussion, we've talked a little bit about it, got some feedback from the applicant on why they are proposing overhead to that particular point on the plan and underground from there?
I'll make a motion to deny the request to have overhead utilities.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the application for twenty-six point oh two-one to allow overhead utilities on that portion of the common public, private drive where underground is required? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
No.
We got three, four nays?
Nay.
Nay, 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 okay, so the nays have it, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the overhead utilities on the portion of the common private driveway where underground is required?
So moved, second.
Motion has been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, hands, I think four, I'll vote five, okay, so that motion carries, so you're good with that? Okay, so through on to section three here, well, I'm out of, out of order here, so I've done the, I've done that piece of it out of order, haven't I, so I'm going to grant architectural design review under five-point-two is to grant architectural design review approval of the unit cluster subdivision and site plan as submitted with the following conditions, the front door for each unit, the primary design features, garages must be either flushed to the building or slightly recessed in all conditions laid out in previous architectural design review, committee meetings have been satisfied to this satisfaction of staff, would someone like to make a motion to grant architectural design review approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, five-point-three has been taken care of, we did that, and five-point-four to deny, we did that, five-point-four, staff recommends approving, okay, staff recommends approving the major site plan application for the eight-unit condominium cluster development at fifteen Hot Hole Pond Road subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions A one through three and subsequent conditions one and two, would someone like to make a motion to grant that major subdivision application approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we're set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Probably going to need it.
You're definitely going to need it.
There's some bump in the...
All right.
Water's running pretty fast.
Again, for the, for the record, nine, yeah, it's going to, it's too fast for us, nine-point-six is Chrysler King Parish has been postponed to the April seventeenth meeting, if we could read item nine D into the record.
We can do that. Tom Wilson and Wilson and Wilson Architects on behalf of Pizano's Realty LLC request request major site plan and architectural design review approval for an addition of 1,200 square feet to an existing 8,000-square-foot building for the purpose of four additional dwelling units. Site is addressed as 59 South Main Street in the Central Business Performance CBP District.
Mark this date down, it's, uh, the, what is it, the 20th of March? I get to correct you, you said major site plan, this is a minor site plan, so.
You're correct.
I am correct. All right, is the applicant here? No?
The applicant is not here, I spoke with him earlier and he said he wasn't able to attend, so.
Okay. All right, well, let's get a staff update on this project and see if we can move forward.
Sure. This is, um, over on South Main Street, there's a little, there's a second floor currently that takes up a portion of the footprint of the building. The applicant is proposing to build out the second floor to match the outline of the first floor and add four units. Due to this, um, staff's comfortable with that, they have, there are elements of a minor site plan that they did not submit for, and, um, but due to the nature of this proposal and the site plan regulations, we're comfortable with reducing the amount of information they provided as they provided the second floor plan and building elevations. ADR recommends approval as submitted, they did offer some recommendations if the applicant wanted to take them up on it. My understanding is they considered it, but they're going to stick with as submitted.
Okay. And just, is this only here because of the, where the location is?
Due to the increase of number of units, it required minor site plan.
I got you, okay. How many units are in there now?
Seven.
Seven, and this brings them in, okay. I knew that. I knew that. Okay, um, questions from the board? Yes.
When I was, uh, going through this, you know, initially what caught me was 1,200 square feet for four new units. So that, I did the math and they aren't large.
No.
So I think, I'm assuming, is that the square footage per new unit? Or are they incorporating it into existing apartments?
There have been renovations occurring on the inside of the building previously. Uh, I'd have to take another look at the second floor plan to see what each unit's square footage is, I don't have, I don't remember that.
That's fine, but it is, 1,200 is going to be integrated with the existing? Okay. So we're not talking about four 300-square-foot units?
No, because there's, one of the units, there's kind of seven and a half units now, so, but it's easier just to use round numbers. So that there's, the, the one unit that's a half will actually be reconfigured so that it's a whole.
Gotcha.
So most of the 1,200 is just for the three additional units, but because they're doing some reconfiguring to that half, that will then give them four additional units. Kind of confusing.
Okay, so.
So they have seven and a half now, and they're reconfiguring and adding the 1,200 square feet for three and a half.
So, without my beans and my abacus, at the end of the day, how many units? Is it 11?
11.
Well, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Questions, staff? Parking? There's an increase in unit count, uh, what's allowed in this zone, is they not required to have additional parking?
In the Central Business Performance District, parking and allocation not required.
Okay.
Having a hard time visualizing this, sorry.
What, the?
Yeah, the second floor, where, so.
It's where the main.
I know where the, yeah, the building is, that.
And the first floor, it, it butts out.
Yeah.
And the, the roof is flat, and the second floor sits back, so.
I got you.
So there's this flat area that doesn't have any second floor.
Okay. I'm just, I can't visualize it from the street, I'm having a hard time visualizing from the street. Oh, right there, okay. That's exactly what I thought it was, I just, I thought for some reason this was way up farther than that. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Okay, um, any questions for the audience? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Yes, sir, come on up. Yes. Hi, could you just have a seat and just, uh, state your name for the record?
Yeah. I own the building, but I, Nestor, 61 South Main Street. I just want to know how they add this four unit, where is it? On the front building or back building, part of the garage?
It, it'll be, it's kind of like I just tried to explain, not very eloquently. And maybe, uh, Alec can get a, a street view up, but the first floor of the building right now, there's a portion of it, it's got a flat roof, and, and they're adding on a second floor on top of that flat roof.
Right there.
Of the first floor.
On the front, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because on the back of the garage, the wall is almost far down now, so that's I worry about.
So that's where it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would you sign the?
Just sign in, that would be great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the audience? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, any other comments from the board, Jeff?
I do like ADR's suggestion about the possibility of on that third floor taking out the peak roof and doing more of a flat.
And doing a flat roof, yeah.
And making it look more like all the other buildings. I understand the building across the street looks different, but it's not, buildings from like, whatever, 1,700.
Yeah, yeah.
And that side of the street is all flat-faced buildings.
I saw that, and again, I was having a hard time picturing the building, but it, it almost looks fake when you, when you look at, there's no real elevation drawings here, so you just got the flat, you know, the flat lawn drawings, you don't have anything to, to grasp a hold of, but I actually do like the idea of bringing it up flat and, and having it, uh, kind of just look more like. Stayed right across as opposed to, uh, trying to mimic the look of what it might have looked like 100 years ago.
Or what's across the street.
Or what's across the street. Any other con, Amanda?
And I agree, because if you do look at, it's a butters, they're.
They're flat.
Flat.
Yeah.
Even, um, Beijing Tokyo is flat.
Yeah.
Even though they've got their little awning piece, but, um, and I was in the ADR and I agreed with their suggestions.
Was the applicant there at the? They were. Any comments or questions from the applicant on it, or? No? Okay.
I don't remember such, but, um, we were, they, they, you know.
If, if I remember the minutes, weren't there some changes suggested and the architect made those changes? In the, in the minutes?
I don't think they're in the changed plans, though. I, I think some of the changes I didn't see in the plans.
When I looked, they looked very, they looked the same, because what we were asking them is this part that's on the second, of the second floor, it's to change the roof line so it doesn't have this triangular.
Yeah.
Piece in the front, and it's still there in our packet.
The packet's still got it, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, I think they, they're in the minutes, but they're not in the vision.
Because they were talking about horizontal boards.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not in the packet that we, we've got.
No, Alex.
Oh.
Right, so the, what you have is what went before ADR, and the applicant did toy around with some revisions, but ultimately they wanted to come to planning board as originally submitted, um, with, as ADR's was a recommendation.
Again, I think you said that, when you gave us the staff update. Been a long day. Other comments from the board? Jeff? Uh, would, uh, someone like to, well, let me get into my packet here, hold on. All right, so try to go in order this time. Um, so again, using as our find a fact, finding a fact, the information that we've got in our packets, the staff update that we got, the discussions that we had, and the minutes from Architectural Design Review. Uh, no input from the applicant, we did hear from one, uh, one of the folks that live, that's in the building. So in our packet, we've got, uh, 3.2 is to grant Architectural Design Review approval for the exterior of the building modifications as submitted with the recommendation that horizontal siding be used on the second floor and within the roof parapet, and the pitched element of the third floor parapet be straightened, uh, be a straight horizontal cap. If these recommendations are incorporated into the revised plan set, um, then they are to be submitted for staff for review and would not require returning to ADR. Does that appropriately address your concerns?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so would you like to make a motion to grant Architectural Design Review application as, as outlined in the packet?
Jim, I think Alex wanted to.
Yep.
I, I just want to make sure, and, um, that was an ADR recommendation?
Yep.
The applicant would not be bound by it, they could go for it as submitted unless you make it, that ADR's recommendation a condition of.
I'm going to say that's what we're going to do. Yeah, I'm going to say that's what we want to do, is make that a condition of approval, resubmit the plans to staff for.
No reason to go back to ADR.
No, no reason to go back to ADR, but do have staff review the plans. Is that okay?
Yep, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
When you say ADR, they don't need to receive additional ADR approval from ADR or yourselves.
No, we, we got the feedback, which is what we wanted from ADR, we're going to make it a condition of approval uh, as part of Jeff's motion to, to make that a condition of approval as outlined in the packet with, with everything that's been outlined there.
Correct.
Correct. And we, do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 3.3 is to grant minor site plan approval for the proposed second floor addition at 59 South Main Street subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 4, subsequent conditions 1 and 2. We don't need to change any of those conditions based on what we get for architectural design, so would someone like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set, sir, thank you, yes, okay. So moving forward, let's move on.
You didn't ask him to sign in.
Didn't ask him to sign in. Let's move on to item 9E, if we could read that into the record.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC on behalf of Douglas Doug W. Hicks, Patricia R. Hicks, and the Douglas R. Hicks 2000 Trust, uh, requests approval of a minor subdivision, uh, minor lot line adjustment. This site is addressed as 95 Shaker Road and 131 Shaker Road in the Medium Density Residential District.
Get up and get out of here.
Mr. Chairman, my relationship with the applicant and my involvement with this, I need to recuse myself.
Absolutely, thank you for the record, uh, Matt Hicks has recused himself from this application and will be, uh, bound to the hallway until further notice. Uh, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record?
Well, good evening, everyone, my name is Mark Sargent, and I am with Richard Bartlett and Associates, and.
Welcome back, Mark Sargent.
Although it's been a while, it's always a pleasure to be, uh, around the table with you folks.
It's a pleasure, I thought you were going to say, it's, it's been a pleasure not to be here.
So nice. Well, I've been here quite a bit in spirit, because I've seen a lot of my plans here, but.
All right, well, let's get a quick staff update on this before we let you talk, because you go on and on, so if we could get a quick staff update on this project?
We have, um, a lot line adjustment in front of us, and staff is recommending conditional approval. Um, the applicant has, um, since requested a waiver that they plan on presenting during the public hearing to not, um, provide the all natural features on the plat. Um, they've provided what they need to show usable and buildable area for the lots, and due to the size, not to provide the rest. It was a comment by staff as the lot line goes through a, a pond-looking thing. Um, but staff is, um, you know, fine with the waiver if the board goes that way.
Pond-looking thing, all right.
Looking at an aerial, I saw.
I don't see that anywhere printed here.
I wasn't going to classify it.
Pond-looking thing. All right, uh, Mr. Sargent, if you could tell us a little bit about this plan?
Sure. Um, well, the sites are located at 95 and 131 Shaker Road. 95 being the Shaker Road School, 131 being the home of Doug and Patricia Hicks. Uh, 95 Shaker Road has an area of 50.29 acres with frontage both on Shaker Road and Mountain Roads. 131 has an area of 18.96 acres with 500, uh, excuse me, 959.67 feet of frontage on Shaker Road. So what we're had before the board this evening is for a lot line adjustment, which would annex 4.23 acres of 131 to 95. So essentially moving the line so that portion of the school that has kind of migrated on to Hicks's personal property would now become part of the school. So that leaves 131, which is the, the Hicks home, with a, a new area of 14.73 acres, and then 95 Shaker Road, which is a school, would have a new area of 54.52 acres, and there's no change in frontage on either lot. Uh, as Alex mentioned, we did request a waiver to Section 12.085, which is to depict significant natural features. On the plan, we have shown, um, enough, uh, topography, wetlands, what have you, on 131 to depict a, a usable, a buildable lot, and of course, the school, um, we've shown kind of a general overview of, you know, the buildings and what have you on that, so. Uh, with that, I'd entertain any questions if you had any.
How did they build them over on to their other property there?
Uh, just one of those things.
One of those things, before our time, so we don't care. Okay, questions from the board? Do you remember the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Um, any other comments from staff? I think it's pretty straightforward.
No, I'm happy to provide language for, for the waiver, and then.
Okay.
If you grant it, uh, I just want to add a precedent condition.
Okay. Is the waiver in here?
No, it is, the waiver is on your report.
Um, so we'll take that as, um, why don't we do that as, uh, underneath, uh, we do that before the minor subdivision, so we'll do it as 3.11, how about that?
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, 3.1 is to, uh, discuss the findings of fact, we've taken the information that we heard here tonight, the testimony from the applicant, as well as the packet of information that we got, um, to use as our findings of fact. Um, 3.11 will add in for the waiver language, Alec, if you could give us that language for the waiver?
Sure. Recommend granting the following waiver to the subdivision regulations utilizing the criteria of RSA 674362N, Criteria 1, which states that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And the waiver is for Section 12.085 Natural Features, to not provide the location of significant natural features other than what has been shown on the plat to show remaining part, showing that remaining parcel will meet the required buildable and usable areas, and whereas no new development is proposed as part of this application.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver?
I will make the motion, grant the waiver as read.
As long as I don't have to reprint, rewrite, re-say it again. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, 3.1, uh, 3.2, excuse me, is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at 95 Shaker Road and 131 Shaker Road subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 8. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would.
Yes.
Uh, precedent condition 9, that waiver is granted, are noted and fully described on the plan, including date granted and applicable section numbers of the subdivision regulations. Should the board vote to deny the waiver, the applicant shall comply with said submission requirements.
Okay. So we'll have precedent conditions 1 through 9, with 9 being, uh, outlined by Alec just now. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustment at Shaker Road, Unit 131, Shaker, at 95 Shaker Road and 131 Shaker Road?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Don't be a stranger, we'll see you again. All right. And again, for the record, 9F, um, I think is off the table, right?
Right.
9F, Aaron Lambert and Wilcox Martin will be heard next month as well. So that brings us to other items, um, on the agenda tonight, and again, just for the record, if anybody's here for public testimony regarding the two council referrals, help me out here, Emery, where are those on my packet?
Uh, they're. Actually, there's, yeah, there's three, zoning the 10B, 10C, and 10D.
So 10B, 10C, and 10D are council referrals, which means that the board will, uh, the board will be hearing the referral, will be discussing it. Uh, we're going to, well, we're not going to take any public testimony tonight. Um, we may take it if it gets pushed out to another, to another session. So with that, um, I want to take the first one up here, other business, um, going to hold off on planning board rules, is that okay? So I'm going to take 10B, which is, uh, a referral from, uh, from city council uh, at the request of Casey DiStefano to consider amending definitions within the city code ordinances. You've got in your packets the information, if we could get a quick staff update, that would be great.
Sure. Just a couple of things. The staff is in the middle of, uh, working on scoping and getting a revision to the master plan. That's coming up in the next, coming up, uh, hopefully next year, isn't that when we have it scheduled for? But that's kind of what we're. An overhaul of the zoning ordinance will take place after the master plan is updated, because that's the proper order of doing things in the planning world. Uh, the zoning ordinance enacts your master plan, and your master plan is kind of the blueprint, and zoning ordinance are all the, uh.
Codifies it.
Codifies it, yeah, makes it so you can enforce your master plan. So it's, uh, cart before the horse to make changes such as what are being proposed without having that master plan update to know what we want the city to look like in the future. So staff would, I guess, put forward that all of those definitions will likely be updated and revised as part of the zoning, uh, ordinance overhaul after the ma, master plan is done. So this is, uh, but too soon to, to contemplate. Not that we're forgetting about it completely, but it's, it's just kind of too soon right now. And just for the board's information, there will be some, uh, interim zoning ordinance amendments on a few items that, uh, I'm working on with, uh, the other division heads. Parking, a few things on signs, just to, to, to get us through, get us through and over, um, the master plan update and when we can look at everything comprehensively.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, just to go, on this particular item, um, from, um, Mr. DiStefano, is that something that goes on a list of things to talk about when you do the master plan? I'm not sure what the procedure is.
Well, I think it's a cart before the horse at that point. I think the, I think the, the master plan is going to outline some of the things that'll, that are in this. this particular piece.
Right.
The issue is coming forward with, with, with the, with the changes, you know, before the master plans are set, before all of the stuff's addressed in the, in the master planning process. And then we got the new master plan, we move forward with the master plan. Jeff?
I just guess I want to ask questions. What impact do these changes potentially have on properties? Are we going to suddenly see a plethora of zoning board applications to get relief from this between now and the time that the new zoning comes out over the next couple of years? Or is this sort of just a cleanup item that really doesn't have a major impact on development or whatnot?
This particular request?
To change these zoning ordinances, are we suddenly going to see people coming forward wanting some sort of zoning relief, you know, going to the zoning board?
No, I, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, so just to supplement what Anne Marie mentioned earlier. So to back up a little bit, the city council, as Councilor Todd can testify to, recently did its priority setting session earlier this month. And as part of the process, the, the council's direction to staff was to move forward with some interim amendments to the zoning ordinance to hopefully clean up some of the things that are driving the traffic to the zoning board of adjustment, signs, parking, maybe some dimensional requirements in certain districts, maybe things related to accessory dwelling units, things of that nature, to try and take care of those housekeeping things that have been put off for quite some time in the hope that Concorde Next would, would be done sooner rather than later. But given how long the Concorde Next process has taken, given how sweeping some of those changes might be, there has been some concern about moving forward with that before a master plan. So our intention is to work with the planning board per council's direction to deal with some of those housekeeping zoning changes over the next 12 months or so, hopefully faster than that, as well as some of the other ones that are on your list here tonight that you're going to talk about in a minute. Go through a planning, a master plan process. The master plan, when it actually is funded by council, will probably take a couple of years to complete. Get some definitive direction from the community about some of these larger zoning issues that are out there, policy questions about where and what types of development you want and what that development should look like, and then move forward into a more comprehensive update of the zoning board, of the zoning ordinance after that. So that's what our intention is. This particular request, if my memory serves, was driven by an application that I think Ms. DiStefano was associated with, whereby they went to the zoning board of adjustment to do some sort of dwelling units or dwelling units that were going to be geodesic dome type of thing on Pembroke Road.
Right, they're little geodesic domes, yeah.
Given how it was reviewed by staff and in the zoning board, it ultimately went to court. The project was not allowed to move forward in part because of some of these definitions that Ms. DiStefano would like the, the city to look at, and the city prevailed. And that project did not go forward for this geodesic dome project that I think was intended to be some sort of transitional housing for people, the way it was classified under our ordinance. So, so her request is for us to look at that. And as the, the acting city planner mentioned, I think it's one of these things that the board can be cognizant of and you can either try to look at it as part of this interim zoning amendment, but given the policy nature of some of these things, it might be better to look at it later as part of a larger zoning effort in the future.
Appreciate it. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Good clarification. Any other further comments or, or questions regarding that? I'm guessing that we want to kind of punt this down, down the road for our zoning, or excuse me, our master plan process to, to take effect and let that kind of settle out from there. I don't know if that's the will of the board or not. Do you need a motion or anything to, to move these forward? So if anybody has any other thoughts on it, welcome to hear them. But I'm going to say we don't act on that and we, we kind of leave it as it is. Okay. Just for the record, we'll recognize that Matt Hicks came back. We didn't go and get him. He's back here all by himself. Next item on our agenda is 10C, Suborowski Associates referral, again, from city council. And this one is a little bit different. This is a zoning amendment. I don't know if we can get a quick staff update or we got any thoughts from staff on it. It would be great to give us what you, what you got. If not, we can kind of go from there. So we've got an amendment in your packet that Mark Suborowski has proposed or through his lawyers, Ari Pollock at the Gallagher Law Firm, regarding some amendment changes to the conquered zoning ordinance specifically. And if you read through all of it, there's a lot to it, but if you read through it, it's, it's basically the height issues regarding seeing the State House dome from the highway. And letter of the law is what the zoning board holds you to, and I'm conscious of that. I think that's a great step to peace, but I tend to be a little bit more wishy-washy, is what Mr. Pierce, I think, has said. But I like to think of it as flexible and offer some flexibility. So I don't know if there's any, what the board's flavor is as far as this particular request for us to take a look at the zoning amendment proposal that, as it exists, and maybe propose some changes or some flexibility to allow for building height to be a little bit higher.
Chairman, if I might, I would kind of say the same vein of some of the things, you know, that were just mentioned now as far as should we wait till the zone, the master plan? Because this area may change in its designation.
Yep.
And the zoning ordinance may change and that be taken up at that time. And in the meantime, the zoning board will have to deal with the individual requests as they come in. So that we're not spot picking this and it has global ramifications.
Matt? Just, I appreciate your thoughts. In this particular one, it would be pertinent to the Central Business Performance District for changing it. And it has been to the zoning board and it was denied. And there was a request for a rehearing which was also denied. So the next step is to rezone. I think the staff and city administration are receptive to the concept that's trying to be advanced here. And the concept is basically to create, to amend the zoning ordinance to create a provision whereby there would be a conditional use permit that the planning board would control and able to develop performance criteria for when you think it might be, or an applicant would request to go above the 80-foot height limit by, I think, 10 feet. And the criteria associated therewith, which would likely be related to public safety concerns, is there sufficient water pressure for fire protection? Is it a height that the ladder truck can reach? Is there obviously water for domestic purposes? The other thing that's problematic, so that's the height piece of it, the dome obstruction piece is problematic because there are places on the corridor, the 93 corridor right now, between, call it Exit 13 at Manchester Street and 393, where there were already obstructions of the dome as it is today. And so therefore, and that, those obstructions may change depending on what vegetation is out at what time during the year. But if you happen to drive by the Rolf Pill Building, for example, on 93, you're not going to be able to see the dome for that split second while you're driving hopefully 60 miles an hour and not faster down 93 through that section. And, and so given that the language of the ordinance is so restrictive and very simply written that it's a one sentence that says, "You shall not obstruct the dome," it creates situations whereby we think it's unnecessarily restrictive and may hold back projects that may achieve certain community development and economic development goals for the city. And so the applicant in this case is trying to, to take a concept of the conditional use permit, which already exists, which would allow development essentially where the Capital Shopping Plaza is on Shore Street and the Opportunity Corridor, Performance District, different district, but similar concept, to go above 80 feet down there in part because of the topography of, of the community right there. We're lower and it's down, it's 20 feet lower than Main Street is, give or take. We're receptive to it. I think we're open to moving it forward. We think, we see it as a relatively minor change. And we think it's also part of, you know, this, this housekeeping effort that we're trying to clean up some of these things that are requiring people to go to the zoning board and to cut down on the number of variances. So that's, that's the administration's point.
So as opposed, as opposed to the prior application, which is a change in the, in the, in the zoning, you're looking at the conditional use permit aspect of it. So we've got some more control of it.
Correct. You would.
That make sense? Yes?
Matt, I have a question. Are we seeing interest in building taller, multi-use buildings, housing, retail, office space? Is that one of the reasons for this? You mentioned economic impacts.
Yeah, I think there would be some interest. You know, there, there's been some development downtown already over the last 20 years, you know, looking at some of those projects, the Smile Building, the Bindery Building, the Hotel Concord Building, the Flatley Building, which is going to get a certificate of occupancy here in a couple of months. You know, in some of those cases, you know, if you look at, the way our height ordinance reads right now is it's from the average grade to the parapet. So if you look at, for example, the Hotel Concord Building, it probably actually is taller than 80 feet because we don't count the mechanical penthouse, which is a substantial structure actually on the top of that building. But all that said, you know, we see this in the case of Mr. Suborowski's specific project. I want to say he had a variance for about eight feet. He couldn't get it because of, of the way the ordinance is written. You know, we had some conversations and felt that, initially there was some discussion about maybe a CUP for 20 feet. We thought that was too far. We thought a 10-foot variance might be appropriate, especially recognizing how some of the topography, the topography is on really all of Main Street, but particularly North Main Street, between Center Street and Pleasant Street, where, you know, any redevelopment efforts down through there are going to be challenged because of that average grade is not measured from Main Street or, or Low Avenue, but in the middle. So therefore, it, it has a negative impact on development projects that are trying to, of the character of Mr. Suborowskis.
Expecting the power to go off any second.
Before the power goes out, do you think any of the built, existing buildings that you mentioned would have been taller if they were allowed to be taller?
Ah, difficult to say.
Yeah.
Hotel Concord.
Hotel Concord, I don't know. I, Flatley, for example, is the most recent one. They were quite comfortable with, with the height of their building, which I think is, and in that case, the, the topography actually works better for Flatley because it's, the hill's going uphill at that point. So these streets taller than Main Street.
And they're also set back from when you look at all the points along the highway. They don't have intersecting lines.
Right. So, you know, in this case, we feel like we have a regulation that is well-intentioned, but because of the way it's currently written, is having a negative impact on development, particularly projects that might be good for downtown. So we want to try to revisit that sooner rather than later. And, and so in that case, the applicant has submitted their, their request to the council and here it is before the board for discussion on what to do next.
Counsel Todd.
Thank you. Would you believe, I've actually heard from people about this.
I bet.
Yeah. Now that the secret is out that I'm sitting on the planning board.
Yeah. They don't care about city council. They, the planning board is really where it's at.
And actually, they have, they have said that they are concerned about this, that they, I guess specifically in the request, they'd be concerned with Items 6C and D, that exceeding the height. I think that there's a recognition, as was pointed out, that in fact, the, there are obstructions already to the view of the dome. But I think what, what folks, what I'm getting anyway from folks is that they don't want to see a further obstruction of views from the dome. And what we just heard with Ms. Hicks' question was that yes, there could be developers out there who would be interested in, in seeking taller development projects. I think that this is an item actually that does fall into the purview of, of review by the, in the master plan process for several reasons. One is that there are obviously people in the, in the public generally that would like to speak on this and like to get their voices heard about what their views are. The second is that council just recently, in their priority setting session, did a focus on historic preservation initiatives. So I think that that also entails what would happen potentially with this downtown corridor, the Central Business District, whatever you want to call it, where we have a lot of our older heritage buildings there that potentially are the source of some great revenue, tourism, that kind of thing. So I do think that this is an area where we'd want to kind of carefully proceed in terms of, you know, planning and getting input. And the master plan process strikes me would be probably the best way to go about doing that.
Well, there's, there's an option too. We could, and we may talk about it the next item on the agenda, but we can, we can refer this for a public hearing at the, at the next planning board meeting. So we have the option to, to say, hey, we want your input public. We want to hear from, from folks out there on this, on this. We don't want to make the decision if, if we've got some public input. So we could take the first step and say, we're not comfortable making this decision without hearing from the public and referring it to the April 17th meeting, posting it and letting the public come in and give us their input. And at that point, we could either make the decision or we could decide that we want to wait for the master plan process to, to work through the system and then address it there. Is that?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think that's an important part of the process. I guess I'm, I'm just still wondering about those other elements that I spoke to that I'm not sure if, if we're going to really be prepared, even with the public input, to make a decision that might have longer-term ramifications in terms, again, of the historic heritage significance of the downtown corridor.
Okay.
But yes, I, I agree with you. I think that that would, I mean, that's certainly what I would recommend is what you just suggested.
And again, through the conditional use permit process, it gives us a lot of leeway to be able to, to look at plans and decide what's in the best interest of the city and how it's going to affect the downtown corridor or anywhere in the, in the whole corridor. So who did I see? Earl?
Yes, thank you. You know, when I first read this, I, I think we can all agree that the, the view of our golden dome from the highway adds some distinction to our city. But it has been brought up, there are buildings that block the view now. Ralph Pill was one that I noticed. And I like the idea of a conditional use because questions are going to come up, well, if the Phoenix Hotel or whatever the building is, is eight feet taller, for how long is the view obstructed? You know, those kinds of things. And I guess I'm not in favor of waiting for a master plan. You know, we, in the first case, we're talking about a, a new idea of extended stay facilities and, and the igloos. And there's some issues with that and what type of land they will go on. Our commercial land, our industrial land within the city is really at a minimum.
Yep.
We're going to get our tax base from building up. The, you know, we had studies for years that the upper, upper stories of Main Street, both north and south, is the greatest place that we can get new property tax revenue. So I, I think, I like the idea of a public hearing, see how large an issue this is. And I think there are a lot of questions, but I, I'm not in favor of
Waiting for the master plan.
Waiting for a master plan in a couple of years on this particular one because you're talking millions of dollars every year you wait.
All right. Other questions or comments from the board? Jeff?
I do have one in the, in the ordinance, the proposed zoning amendment. Under Item B, it specifically talks minimizing shadow impacts and impacts to solar access to public parks, open space, and adjacent buildings, properties. I can find no definite definition within our ordinance of what is a solar impact is or impacts to solar access to a butter's. And I think we need to somehow, in this, tie what that means. Because if you, suddenly I've got a nice three-story building and I've got apartments on that second floor and you suddenly put up an 80-story, five-story building and now they're looking at a wall and now they have no sunlight, they shadow it all the day, that means an impact, but it's not clear. And I think we need to think about those definitions as part of this zoning amendment or as part of that CUP process or something.
And again, I think it would be addressed as part of the, as part of the master plan process, but the CUP would give us the ability to have public input to hear that.
But in the meantime, though, we need to understand what that definition's going to be, or else how do we, how do we vote for or against the CUP if we don't know those definitions now?
Okay.
You know what I mean? That's my concern. I mean, other than that, I hear what you're saying. I do hear what you're saying. You know, I, I don't know, Earl, that I would say, when you say we should, we can all agree certain things. Ralph Pill Building is a historical building that's been there for how long? A lot of the other buildings that currently are there probably preceded all these zoning requirements of height and visual blockage and whatnot. So I don't know if I'd characterize a lot of those historical buildings as, well, there's buildings that are already blocked. Well, yes, but they probably predate most of our ordinance related to that. So I don't know if I'd use that as the barometer for the future.
Okay.
And this is something that, that the applicant, for lack of a better word, has put together. And there's certainly nothing that precludes the planning board from after and there's certainly nothing that precludes the planning board from, after a public hearing, making recommended changes to the language that's here, such as, yes, this is great, except we also need to include a definition for solar impact and before we're...
Shadow, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So are we, are we comfortable making a recommendation? We have a public hearing on this at the next, at the next meeting? Would someone like to make a motion to push this 10C, Siborowski Associates referral from city council to the April 17th meeting? Notice it as public hearing and move forward?
Question, real quick, if I could. What does that agenda that night look like so far? I mean, we've been moving a lot of stuff to April.
April, I will just tell you, the number of applications that came in yesterday, today, on top of three that were continued, April is going to be packed.
I just want to be respectful of the public, and we, this, a lot of these times, these end up being at the end of the agenda, and these people sit through three and a half hours, and a lot of them leave. I would say, could we consider this May, and maybe, can this be first on the agenda?
Why don't we put it in front of the...
Instead of being an item 10, I mean, if that's too late, if the staff would...
No, I'd like, I'd like to do it in April, and I'd like to put it in front of the agenda.
I would, just to bring in all those people...
We'll put it in the first part of the public hearing. That's fine. Let's do that, because we're going to probably, I'm going to probably recommend that for the next one.
I know, and that's where I'm going. I kind of see that coming, so...
Why don't we, why don't we take a motion and a second from, do we get a motion? No.
Because I...
So would someone like to make a motion to move this to the April meeting, putting it in the front of the agenda?
I will so move that. Make that motion.
Motion's made in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and again, on the next item on our agenda, I have heard from people on this, on this one, Council Todd, and I'd like to get some further feedback. I did talk with the solicitor's office, I did get some feedback from a couple of other folks out in the marketplace. You've got to recuse yourself. Sorry, I forgot to ask if anybody has recused themselves. So we'll recognize that Earl Pierce has recused himself from this discussion, and any further discussion regarding casino gaming. So I would like to propose on this one is, we've got some language that's been referred to us from the city council. I really want to get some public testimony and some public hearing information on this. I'd like to hear from the lottery commission, and I know that there's been some conversations from the lottery commission to the AG's office, and I'd like to get some feedback from the lottery commission. So I'm going to make a motion, without even discussing it tonight, that we push this item to our April 17th meeting as well, and get some feedback on public testimony for this, or push it out to May if we want to do May.
Can I suggest that we push this one to May?
We can do this one. This one is as...
I think in essence...
Let's push it to May, then. That's fine.
Yeah, they have two kind of...
No concerns with that, no matters.
Right. Plus it gives the, us to, time to hear maybe more from the city's listener, find more what the gaming commission might be thinking.
Perfect. That's fine, yeah. I do want to hear the other one, but this one is, no hurry for this one. So would somebody like to make a motion to recognize that we're going to do the same thing, post it for public hearing, and push it to our May meeting?
First on the agenda?
I, we'll see where it falls. We'll see what gets pushed from the April meeting.
I'll make the motion to move it to May.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we will hear that one in the May meeting. So I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is that right? No, we've got to go back up for adopting planning board rules.
Oh, 10E.
10E?
Yes.
Yes, well, let's do 10E first, June 19th. June 15th is a federal holiday, and we are scheduled to meet our June planning board meeting, which all of the April and May things that'll be pushed off of the agenda will be coming up in June. Do we have any thoughts on moving the agenda? Are we scheduled, do we want to move the agenda? Should we move the agenda? Is City Hall open? No. So we've got to move it.
Yes, we have another date.
So the question is...
Oh. The question that I have are, would there be applications that would be leading any kind of timeline, deadline that would be at risk of, of whatever that risk is?
60-day, yeah, the 60-day first. That I don't know.
That I don't know either, because it will largely depend on...
What happens in April and May.
I mean, yeah, that's a...
So if I could...
Can't really say right now.
Can we move, are we, if we're needing to move it, are we looking to move in the same week to like Tuesday, so then we don't run into any issues with dates, because we're actually moving ahead a day? If this room is available, Concord TV is available, everything else?
So Tuesday, June 18th, is that...
That would be my recommendation, yeah. In that, yeah, at least do it in that same week.
So let's shoot, let's shoot it back to staff and ask staff if they can confirm that the room is available for June 18th, which is Tuesday night, and we'll officially move the meeting to that date once we get approval, once we get, we're back in the next meeting.
Are there any special requirements of notifying the public in advance of that, other than just in the previous meeting?
Because all the notifications will be, will be, say that's the date of the meeting.
Yeah, and we'll update the city's community calendar online.
I just want to make sure we got...
Run afoul. Better earlier than later, but I don't want to screw anybody else up. Any other questions? I see a star on the hand. Teresa? No?
Nope, nope, nope.
Okay. So need to make a motion or anything like that? We'll just wait for city staff on that. Re-adopt planning board rules. I'm going to let you give us an update on this.
So here's the situation on our lovely planning board rules.
We have none.
We have none that are officially adopted. I have searched high and low for them, and they are nowhere to be found, including the city clerk's office. So technically, by state statute, we are supposed to have adopted planning board rules, so there, what is in your packet is, there's no changes in it from whatever was adopted at the last time it was adopted. This is more just kind of a housekeeping item to officially adopt, and then I'll have to, and then the chair will sign them, and then we'll have our signed copy that we can give to the clerk's office.
Matt?
Thank you for doing this. I especially like the attendance vacancies and removal section, which is a concern of mine. You know, people will miss from time to time, but when people are rarely here, it's really frustrating. But I will also point out, if we move a meeting because of a federal holiday, perhaps it shouldn't count against a member.
Yeah.
Are you speaking at a time?
I don't know if I'll be here or not. I just want to make sure it doesn't count against me, yeah.
Okay. So do you need anything from us as far as a recommendation?
Just a motion in a second to adopt, and then I'll print out a hard copy for you to sign.
Anybody, yeah, Jeff?
No, I can't find my copy, but I had a question, but...
That's fine. No? Okay. Any other, any, yeah, sorry, Earl. We forgot to, we forgot to go get Earl.
I did have a quick question.
Yes.
You said there's nothing on file, but then you say we're re-adopting what's already there. What, I think what you're saying is there's nothing that...
Signed.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that point, because it was a little confusing.
We're not starting from scratch.
That's what I was expecting. I'm like, okay, but we're re-adopting. That was my question.
So would someone like to make a motion to re-adopt those rules as outlined in the packet?
So moved.
And I second.
Motion's been made in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. I missed that, Matt, completely. The motion in a second. All right, so that brings us through to other business, I believe.
One other item.
What's the other item?
The Architectural Design Review Committee.
Oh, committee meeting, committee review. So on your packet, we've got reappoint the following individuals for the corresponding term limits. These individuals are currently serving as members of the committee, Jay Dougherty, Claude Gilenholm, Elizabeth Durfee-Hengan, and Ron King. Ron, sorry, Ron King. We would put them out to have terms expiring on December 31st, 26th. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Two of them, yeah.
Two of them, 25, I'm sorry. Two of 25, two of 26. Would someone like to make a motion to reappoint those individuals as outlined?
Also moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in a second and recognizing...
I want to make it clear who is who, just for record.
Oh, for the record, I think Liz Hengan was the co-chair with Jay?
Jay.
Jay Dougherty.
Oh, I meant for who's or which terms.
I'm sorry. Jay Dougherty is 26, and Claude Gilenholm is 26, Elizabeth Durfee-Hengan is 25, and Ron King is 25.
So I have a question before we vote. How many open spots are there?
As many as we want. How many would you like? We've got a few? There's at least three or four.
So how many, if we can help find people, how many would you like?
Yes, you can. Please do. Two at least, two, maybe three.
Because, if I may add, because if one, and at most two, then we don't have four of them, and it's, it gets down sometimes to just four of us here.
Yep.
All right, two or three people.
Yep.
That's our homework.
And you'll, you'll agree to stay on for now, Amanda? Okay. That's your homework. Just find some people, saddle them, saddle them with Architectural Design Review. All right. Does someone like to make a motion to reappoint those individuals as so eloquently outlined by the chair?
Motion.
Motion's made in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.